We're not expecting anybody else, right?
No.
We're at time. All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order of the Austin Planning Commission meeting. Have all the commissioners present had a chance to review last month's minutes. Any question, changes, addendums? All right, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
And second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on. Holly, I understand we had a bit of an adjustment to our agenda, so we may only have one thing on the docket today?
Yeah, we just have the first public hearing of Shannon Shuey. The second matter was taken off the agenda. There was some confusion on my part with regard to the area in which the variance applied for a short line setback. And I kind of clarified that with the Minnesota DNR, the local urban geologist, and so we took it off the agenda.
Okay.
So you wanna just, you wanna announce the first?
Sure, so first up, sorry, first up, we have petitioner Shannon Shuey interested in replacing, wishes to replace and build a second detached garage thirty-two by forty-four feet behind the existing twenty-four by twenty-four foot garage. The total square footage allowed for accessory structures on properties greater than one acre is fifteen hundred and eighty-four feet. This one would be nineteen hundred and eighty-four feet, therefore requesting a variance of four hundred feet.
All right, just checking my materials here. Actually, so replace is not correct. He wants to add, he wants to add a second detached garage.
Okay.
So the property is located at seventeen eleven Eighth Avenue Northwest. It's a single-family residential district and the current use of the property is residential. To the north is, across the road is Riverland. And that is an R O district and there are some residential properties in that area as well. And then to the south and east and west are other residences. The parcels are fairly large in that area. The, this property, Mr. Shuey's property is greater than one acre. The, this, this circle actually shows the properties that were notified of the request for variance. I got one comment back from the neighbor of this property and I just spoke to Mr. Shuey and they had a conversation about the setback. So this neighbor was concerned about the property lines being accurate. That when they originally surveyed that they were incorrect or something along those lines. But the, the garage that Mr. Shuey is proposing would be thirty-two by forty-four and it would be oriented this way perpendicular to this existing garage. And the garage would start about the middle of this structure. So there would be, he estimated about thirty-five to forty feet between the garage and the neighboring property. So it would exceed our setback, which is five feet by a great deal. And if the estimated property lines, and this is just anecdotal, I have no way of knowing for certain, you know, was estimated to be off maybe ten or fifteen feet potentially. So that would account for any concerns there. So this is, to go back a little bit, this is a request for variance. The square footage of the existing garage is twenty-four by twenty-four, which is five hundred and seventy-six square feet. The proposed garage is one thousand four hundred and eight square feet. So total accessory structure would be one thousand nine hundred and eighty-four, which exceeds our limit, our square footage limit for accessory structures by four hundred square feet. So the request for the variance is for that additional four hundred square feet. The property has only one accessory structure at this point, so the second, adding a second accessory structure is allowed. The, purpose of the, the R one district is to encourage the preservation of residential neighborhoods characterized by single-family buildings on medium-sized lots. We obviously, over the years, have, you know, great variation in the lot sizes in Austin now as we've annexed properties over the years, you know, since we adopted our original zoning code. Our minimum lot size is six thousand square feet, which allows two accessory structures, but it's limited to a thousand square feet of maximum for accessory structures. Over one acre is one thousand five hundred and eighty-four square feet allowance. The, uh, ordinance that applies to the accessory use or structure is listed in your materials indicating the limits. The Planning Commission, if you decide in making your decision whether to make a recommendation to approve or deny, should consider whether the variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code, whether the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan, whether the applicant has established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the provision and that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the provision. Practical difficulties is described as the plate of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. The variance will not permit any use that is not allowed in the zoning district where the effective land is located and the variance will not alter the essential character of the surrounding area. And economic considerations alone shall not constitute an undue hardship if a reasonable use of the property exists under the terms of the ordinance. The petitioner is here. If you have any questions about his proposed use and potentially, I mean, in this instance, from my perspective, the property is a little over an acre. There's not any visible, well, actually, maybe you could speak to this. Is there, can you come up and talk to the planning commission a little bit about the conditions on your property? That would maybe influence your location, the location.
Holly, just to clarify before he does, so the issue here is not the second building, it's solely the square footage.
Correct, yeah, it's just the extra, additional square footage, the extra four hundred square feet.
Go ahead and state your name and your address for the record.
Just go with the. Okay, wanna try this? See if that works better.
I, yeah, I guess, I talked to him. There is gonna be no issues on that. He just brought it up, getting the letter from Holly here. I guess as far as, yeah, I'm just looking for availability of space. My property is, is actually about one point eight six, about almost two acres. Goes from here all the way over to this tree line and comes to the front there. Yeah, just RVs, vehicles, mowers, snow blowers. So just looking for another structure, another building to keep everything intact and covered up.
Are you looking to do any sort of like commercial or business stuff out of this building? Any of those equipment that you just described for that reason?
No, that's, this is mostly, that's my, my equipment, taking care of the place. Two lawn mowers, couple of snow blowers. I got a twenty-eight RV, twenty-eight foot RV, that's what I'm kinda planning to store that in there too. Yeah, just need more space, that's what it's coming down to.
Commissioners, any questions for the petitioner?
So your driveway is gonna be down along the property line to the west side of your existing and then into your structure?
Yeah, the driveway, well, as you see, it comes in loops and then comes back here. There's a pretty big landing right here. And then just next to the garage, you know, we'll have a driveway back to the other garage. I'm just gonna go gravel.
Okay, so why do you, what circumstances, why do you need the extra four hundred? Why can't you stay within the required fifteen hundred and forty-eight? You have to give us good justification for that in order for us to give you, to recommend the variance.
Okay.
For reference, I think that's about thirty-two by just a little less than thirty-two would be under the number.
Okay.
So thirty-two by forty.
Well, thirty-two by thirty-two, I don't know, that would just kind of be my vehicles with the RV. I was just, I guess I was just going thirty-two by forty-four as a way to cover all my ends. Have enough available space for what I do need and if anything shows or need anything more, keep inside.
So it's your intent that most of the stuff we see in the aerial photo would end up inside the new building, right?
Yeah.
Outside, sitting around?
Yeah, I got, well, she has a truck, I have a truck, I have a daughter driving, so, yeah, vehicles add up, yep. And then I don't know if the, the arrow is kinda covering the RV on the side there. I have that right there. But, yeah, 'cause right now as, with the garage, that gets pretty much three-quarters full. I only can put in one vehicle during the summer with all the equipment I have, taking care of the place, tillers, lawn mowers. And then during the wintertime, I put a, one of those holes, tent sheds up just to hold everything so I can have two stalls again.
You talk about the equipment you need to upkeep the property. Is that something unique about this property due to size or the type of yard or maintenance that requires additional equipment that maybe an average resident wouldn't require?
Well, I got two acres, so I got a fifty-four inch deck, lawnmower, couple of push mowers. Gotta make the kids do something. And then a couple of snow blowers. I got one for my riding mower for the length of the driveway and up on top. And like I said, yeah, I got the RV, you know, so, and then with the other vehicles. So I got two more children, they're gonna be coming up of age too, so.
Looks like we had eight neighbors in Northside, Holly. Did you get any feedback at all?
Uh, me, the one that Mr. Shuey talked to, neighbor to the left.
And what were his comments?
That was the one who was worried about the property line, yeah. But with the setback, the proposed setback, that Mr. Shuey intends, he wasn't, I guess that was resolved. And I haven't heard back from him since.
His, his concern was that the, the property line shown in the GIS system wasn't accurate? Is that the issue?
Yeah, and I think if, you know, so our minimum setback is five feet.
Right.
For an accessory structure and, you know, so if he thought that there was some error in the property lines, that would be pretty close. But, I mean, without having a survey done, I mean, we assume that these property lines are correct. Unless, until somebody, you know, proves differently. But we don't require a survey for residential builds.
It would, it would be up to him to have it surveyed, right? If he wants to challenge it?
They have it surveyed, yeah, if he wanted to challenge it.
Yeah, I wanna put that on the record. I think it's important that whatever we do tonight doesn't change where a property line is, doesn't change setback requirements, doesn't change what would happen if he poured gravel in the neighbor's lot, which would probably be a trespass that the neighbor would object to. So it's up to Mr. Shuey to be very certain about where his property line is before he puts any improvements in. For our purposes, it's can this property host another large garage? He's proposing where it's gonna go, but the exact location of that garage should really be ultimately driven by concerns about where that property line is. So really, the question before you is, is there something unique about this property where an additional four hundred square feet or so of garage space makes some sense, consistent with why we have the ordinance that restricts that amount? So I think Commissioner Burrows' question was, was very good. I think other questions about what's unique about this property have been very good tonight. But it's gonna be Mr. Shuey's responsibility to figure out if he can pour gravel where he wants to for that drive access. I will also state, just, I drove by the property today. One thing that doesn't sort of show on this map, aerial map, is there's actually quite a bit of elevation from the road to Mr. Shuey's property, maybe twenty, twenty-five feet. I mean, it seemed like a lot. I, I almost couldn't see the house from the road, let alone anything behind the house, for what that matters.
It's also heavily wooded area, isn't it? Also, it's pretty well screened?
Yeah, surrounded, it looks like.
Yeah, this tree line got about half of it. They had to redo the sewer over here last year. They kinda cut half of that out of there, but they still got a little tree cover. But as far as, yeah, all trees all the way around. And the actual, if I do do gravel, you know, this driveway is actually gonna be about right where the blacktop is. It's already, it's gonna be kinda straight with that coming to the back. So, I mean, it's already a pre-existing there, you know, and that's fifteen, twenty feet away from the fence that is there, you know? That's in the woods, there is a fence here. But he said, well, that's been probably, you know, fifty, sixty years when they put that fence up, so. You know, that's just gonna be leading right off of that garage, you know? And that's why I talked to him and he's like, well, that ain't even close with even to the driveway within ten feet at all there either. So if there was an issue with that, you know? But like I told him, it was way back there, you know, and that was at least forty, forty-five feet from that property line as marked right now, so.
Well, we have some statutory requirements to meet. I'd like to step through each one of those if we could. The one, the first requirement is the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code.
Well, I think that goes to, are you going, if you were to build this garage, are you gonna build it in the same manner and fashion as the existing garage and structure? Or is it going to be a pole barn?
No, it's gonna be a simple, framed up with two-by-sixes.
So?
There'll be a, there'll be a monolithic slab, pretty much, slab and then, yeah, like, kinda like a four-eighths around.
So it'll be in harmony with the current structures? It's not gonna, okay?
Yeah, no poles, no pole barn.
And your stated purpose is that it's for a garage, which is included in accessory structures under the code?
So, yeah, in the purpose included in the documents, it's to preserve residential neighborhoods characterized by single-family buildings on medium-sized lots. So he's not proposing something that's not compatible with a residential neighborhood. An accessory structure is allowed. And in this instance, it's just a, you know, the variance would be just a little larger than what? Not trying to convince you, but either way, but the purpose is preservation of residential neighborhoods essentially, so.
And the petitioner did confirm that there will be no commercial activity run from this structure?
Right.
Well, I guess number two, the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, there's no changes proposed with the comprehensive plan and there's nothing in our comprehensive plan that specifically speaks to the accessory structures in residential areas.
And going forward, we're not, this does not move us in a different direction?
No.
And the last one. The applicant has established that there are practical difficulties in complying with the provision that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the provision, which is the difficult one, because it seems that it is entirely possible that you could build a structure on your property that does conform. That it's just an adjustment in size, but it's still feasible. Does that inhibit your ability to store the items that you had intended to store? Reduction of square footage to thirty-two by just under thirty-two?
I'd have to make it a one-stall kinda situation, RV, I mean, kind of type, I guess. Could accumulate more stuff, but, you know, it isn't right now.
Man, I know it wouldn't be ideal and just wanted to just hear if there would be something that you weren't able to do by adhering to the code as it's written, without the variance.
How big is the RV?
Twenty-eight feet.
Twenty-eight?
I guess I tend to agree with what Commissioner Stewart is implying is that if we let Mr. Sewer build, it's, there's, there's really nothing that says he has to build it bigger. If it was a variance from the line, that'd be one thing, but just size is another issue. Everybody has storage issues. If we let everybody just build whatever they need to store their stuff on their property, we might as well throw away the, the, the code. So I guess I'm, at this point, I'm, I'm opposed to giving the variance.
I kinda look at it the other way myself. As a neighbor, I would rather see him build a new building and put all this stuff that you can see in the aerial photo. I'd rather see it inside a building and just have to look at that building rather than see everything sitting around. And if a bigger building allows him to get all that stuff inside versus a smaller building where he's still gonna have stuff sitting outside, I'd rather see the bigger building. If I was his neighbor, that's the way I look at it, but, so I'm more inclined to approve their requests.
When I think there needs to be something to be said to about the unique characteristics of this property, not only just the location and the height and the surrounding nature around it, but the size. I mean, if we're looking at straight percentages, if you have an acre lot, you can have a thousand square feet. Anything over an acre, you can have up to fifteen hundred. He now has one point eight six acres. So if we're doing straight math, wouldn't that, if we're doing like a coverage percentage, wouldn't that be about eighteen hundred square feet? I mean, I'm, I'm not great at math, but, I mean, that's sort of how I look at it too, which is, should we, we would look at this as a coverage of property? And the fact that I, he, this is a large piece of property and I expect him to have the unique need of having bigger equipment to maintain that property. So I'm inclined to approve it or recommend approval.
So we've got some difference of opinions, which is great. I think those who maybe haven't weighed in, it would be helpful to hear from you. I'll say for myself, I'm sort of inclined to agree with Commissioners, Commissioner Lutz as far as, you know, I personally would also rather see a nicely built building than stuff. And I also am inclined to agree that the size of this property is a pretty unique condition. I think, to be honest, from, I was, that's why I want a clarification for myself. I'm more of a one building versus two kind of a person, but since we allow two within the, within the code, a little bit bigger to make sure everything fits is in line with sort of what I, what I believe would be something that the city should be looking for.
I feel the same way, that way.
Until things don't fit anymore.
Yeah, correct, yes.
I also agree with Commissioner Burrows. I think because of the size of the property and because of how the property is laid out, I don't feel that that should be kind of in conflict with the harmony of the neighborhood and also support someone being able to have all of their items in one covered space.
Do we know around the timing in which this, uh, these requirements were adopted?
It, it has been in the recent past, and I mean that by it's been during the time that I have been associated with the city attorney's office, uh, because I remember when we made major changes to our accessory structure ordinance. Uh, one of the biggest drivers of that was an inclination of landowners in some of our neighborhoods with a little larger lots to start putting up pole sheds. And we wanted to make it more of a residential appearing structure. So some of the things we added were that the exterior needs to be consistent in materials and construction to the home, uh, to try to maintain less of a farm appearance and more of a, of an urban residential appearance. But part of it also was that we have lot coverage requirements, but people are buying more things, more RVs, more boats, more trailers, more toys. And so there is this drive to put up larger and larger and larger garages. And in many circumstances, it was viewed as that's way too big for the lot, even though it might have met the setback, and even though it might have met just barely the lot coverage. Uh, because when you start to have a neighborhood that's got small houses but big garages, it really does change the way the neighborhood feels and doesn't feel as residential anymore. Uh, sometimes we're asked, uh, about past cases. Every case is unique, so I want to say that right up front. Every property is unique. In fact, we're looking at this as, well, this is a unique property. But we've run into a couple of these not too long ago. One was on a much larger parcel that used to be a farm homestead that was annexed in to the, to the city, and that owner actually had a tractor to mow the lawn and deal with the large size of the lot. And I think that was motivating factor in granting that, because the lot was so big that even with this additional structure on it, it did not appear crowded. If you drove by, you would not think, gee, they really overbuilt that, because it was so big and they had tractors and things that most residential owners would not have. So I think these questions, you know, are consistent with maybe that lot. We also had one in a more residential neighborhood with smaller lots where the neighbor came and said, you know, this is going to be five feet back from the line, but this is right outside my window, and this is going to change the entire experience of looking at my house. And I think that the reaction of the commission was, yeah, that's not the right place. That's why we passed this ordinance. So this one's interesting because it's in the middle.
Yep.
It's, it's a larger than normal lot. It's very wooded and secluded. No one's going to say that their sightlines are interfered with or that the property looks terrible from the street necessarily. But it's not a property that has tractors because it's so large that you need that level of additional equipment to carry for. So, this is a hard one. This is, this is why you guys get paid the big bucks.
I will-
This is a recommendation in council too, so it's not your final statement. Whether you feel like this would violate the reasons why we have this ordinance, or if this is a lot that has now exceeded the level where a little extra space to house the additional equipment doesn't cause a problem for anyone, doesn't change the character, you know.
I, I will say, I do remember the outcome of the second one you referred to where the commission denied it, because it was such a large chunk of the lot. And the, and the person actually pulled their application and kind of took another look at our code and built a structure that conforms square footage-wise, but was much taller than some of the neighbors would have preferred because it fit code. And that was sort of a good lesson to me, that just, you know, sometimes, for me personally, sometimes a small variance to the code makes more sense than somebody fitting something differently into our code, which I think happened in that case, in my opinion.
I appreciate the additional context. Uh, I think it matters in this case that, um, the spirit of the, uh, the ordinance was based on achieving a more residential look, uh, which I think, um, the petitioner has explained that that would be the case here, um, that, uh, it is not interfering with sightlines, doesn't change necessarily the character of, uh, the lot overall appearance, um, based on the coverage and the, uh, description of the proposed structure. I think it does make sense, in this case, to, um, adjust to, um, probably, uh, the trend of accumulating bigger and more equipment on properties, uh, in, in areas, um, that are urban-ish, not necessarily urban, not necessarily agricultural. So, thank you for that.
I want to make sure everybody has a chance to sort of weigh in before we look at taking a vote. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? If not, then I think I'd entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to recommend the council to approve the request to, uh, for the variance.
I would second that.
We've got a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. You're on the city council, sir.
Appreciate your input.
Thank you. Holly, anything else for us?
No, that's the only matter that we have on the agenda at the moment.
For what it's worth, I asked Holly if we should talk about this before he made the decision, but you know, we're going through the zoning code. And so I think the accessory structure is an area where we've struggled with a few of these, and we're going to take a close look at that. So, I, I kind of like Commissioner Burrow's suggestion that maybe it's more of a percentage or somehow guided by the size of the lot, because if you have a ten-acre parcel, it, it, that's not going to make a lot of sense.
I remember looking at a structure for horse, and it was like a fifteen-acre lot, but it happened to be in the city.
Yeah. I also think it's interesting, and I don't know exactly how to account for this, but, uh, you know, this is a, from the, from the aerial view, a mo- modest or a regular-sized house, is what I would say. Uh, you could attach a four-stall garage to this house, and as long as you weren't violating the setback requirements, there's no square footage limitation because it's attached. So we also have that discussion, that if the existing garage were attached to the house, it wouldn't be considered an accessory structure. It wouldn't have counted against him, and he could have built this garage. So, there are ways that our current ordinance, I think, rubs in a, in a hard way sometimes, and we're going to have to take a look at that. And I think that's why we need to, to look at our ordinance every once in a while and learn from our experiences.
I would ask that you do the same thing with the setback ordinances.
Yeah, we actually are. We're going to have a, uh, there's going to be a display at the library from Friday until, this Friday until next Thursday, um, with some boards for feedback. So it'll be a spot for you to pick your favorite, you know, option, uh, on these various boards. I'm not sure if the accessory structure, structures was one of them at this particular, uh, community engagement event, but, um, yeah, you should go to the library and take a look at it. And I'll be over there at some point to try and encourage people to take a look at it. Hopefully, it's not too complicated. It won't be for you, because you're familiar with these kinds of issues, but, um, we are trying to get as, as many people to weigh in as possible. Um, and then, again, if any of you've had a chance to visit our, uh, website and visit the zoning update site, uh, please take a look at that. And there's a, there's a survey included with that as well. I think I emailed you guys a link. Um, and if you have any questions about it, uh, please let me know, and then we'll just post some updates on that website, and, uh, we'll probably put something on social media as well to let people know.
I know for me, and I think I told you this, but if not, now I am, uh, on the accessory structure, the twenty-five-feet-tall thing is something that greatly surprised me as kind of being in code. So I, I'd like to have that looked at. And there may be a reason why it's twenty-five feet, but it seems quite tall to me.
Actually, thirty, I think.
Is it?
Definitely.
Um, it seemed quite tall to me.
Sure.
And since we're here, do any other commissioners have any other things that we want to make sure is sort of gets an eyeball as we look at this? You don't have to say now, but-
Well, so they're doing a, what they call code diagnosis and kind of, and then it'll be organized in a way that's a little bit easier for us to see, um, what the specific requirements are for each district. At least that's my hope. And then, um, it'll be easier for us to go through it and make some comments once we get to that point. So, don't worry if you haven't seen a lot of things so far. There'll be more to come, and you'll have opportunity to provide feedback.
So do they go back and review the past history of the variances and things that we've, that the planning commission has had to deal with?
They do. Yep, yep. We have a list of all the, I think we go back about twenty years, uh, with the, our list of, um, you know, the front yard setback variances and the accessory structure variances. And they have the list of which ones pop up the most. Um, and then, uh, yeah, it's just all, yeah, it's all organized into the specific issues, um, whether it's a rezone or a, you know, plats or, um, yeah, I mean, the variances, of course, are the things that we're looking at a lot. And then conditional use permits as well. You know, should there be more kinds of conditional use permits potentially, or, um, you know, and then we looked at, we did when we updated our comprehensive plan, we included more, uh, categories for districts. And so those will have to line up with, um, our update, our zoning code update. So there'll be some areas that could potentially be mixed use versus how we are now with our specific, you know, residential, commercial, industrial, and then allowing everything else, kind of, you know, like in our residential, we are, I guess, if we're in a B-two district, pretty much everything else is allowed, you know, so housing and maybe, yeah. So there's a lot of things. There's really a lot of different things.
Does this cover the sign code as well?
It does not, no. That's kind of a-
Separate.
Yeah, it's more complicated, I think, and we didn't, uh, budget for that. So, yeah, sometime in the future, it'd be good to look at that again, too. Any other questions or comments? All right, thanks for coming, everyone.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So we-
Yeah, what to say? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you have to stay here.